Motion second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Also need a motion for the consent agenda. Let's get this back into place. Ms. Sue, will you lead us on the floor?
For allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So now we'll move on. A motion for the consent agenda.
So move.
Okay, that's second. Second pet Miss Sue. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have the student advisory report.
Hey, everybody. My name is Rachel Grissom and I'm here with the student advisory. So this week, we are congratulating the JROTC Raider Team for competing at Nationals this November. They placed 11th overall. Also, our Beta Club went to Arthurland Resort this week before Thanksgiving. Forty-six betas and fourteen parents and sponsors attended, and they competed in over twenty events. And everyone that won an award is going to go to competition in Fort Worth, Texas in 2020. So this is from Mr. Todd Wilmore. So we had our first home basketball game on December 2nd against Upperman. And tomorrow night, we actually have another one at six o'clock. So there's that. And then from Ms. Danielle Smith with the FFA Club, they are doing the angel trees from Rainy Creek Manor. And if you want to help with that, you can contact her. For Ms. Jamie Brandon with FBLA, they celebrate Prematurity Awareness Month for the March of Doms, collecting change and baby bottles during homeroom. And she's still collecting donations, so you can drop some off with her. And the FCCLA and Culinary Students have been really busy this November. They cater Tiger Lily Boutique's Fashion Show, the Evening Exchange Prayer Breakfast, and the Education Legislative Reception. And then in December, they also have several things on their agenda. FCCLA officers were elected. The president is Katia Chalkley, treasurer is Jazzy Sartan, secretary was Abigail Hodge. And then the senior historians Gabriel Tate, the junior historians Dane Galloway, the sophomore historians Haley Collette, and the freshman historian is Sadie Bell. And they're always super busy as well. And then this is from Sadie Smith with NHS. They have had several Christmas events they're helping out with this holiday season, and you can all refer to the agenda for more details. And then from First Sergeant Timothy Howard, they have collected 101 shoeboxes to support Operation Christmas Child this holiday season, and those will be distributed around the world. And then from St. Ammelliken with the Climate Clarue, they're taking donations for our local fuel program, and that is currently serving 26 high school students in our school. And they get a bag filled with like food for over the weekend and stuff. So that's really great. And then from Ms. Kelsey West, the Scholarship Coordinator, beginning next week, December 10th and 11th, the college office will be helping the remainder of students who have not started their fast foot applications. And then from Ms. Leah Simpson, her students recently joined the Multicultural Club at Sawani, the University of the South, and they learned about all their programs and ways to improve their college acceptance. And that's all we have. Thank you all. Thank you.
Good job.
A little late breaking development. The high school choir, the select choir performed today for the Rotary Club of McMinnville. Did a splendid job, as expected. Canette Dixon, one of our outstanding faculty members, is the director. And they will be leaving Tuesday for their fifth visit by invitation to perform before an international audience at Epcot Center's candlelight procession. Fifth year in a row, we've been invited back. You gotta be doing something good.
That's right.
You don't got there by being mediocre.
I'd like to encourage each one of us, whoever can attend the culinary class, to the midterm annual Christmas open house on Thursday, December 19. Several of us went last year, and it was really nice. Really nice.
Is that in the high school cafeteria?
It's 10:45 to 12:45 in the culinary parts.
Okay.
Did you say the 19th?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Four times?
It's 10:45 to 12:45.
It's in the agenda.
Oh, okay.
I think you can hang around longer, but it's really good. Real nice.
I bet there'll be good food.
It was. It was. That was just for you, special invitation.
All right.
Well done. I think next, we have recognition. Not anything tonight?
Except to recognize the Tennessee School Board of the Year. We can recognize you all.
Woo, look at us.
We have our plaque on the wall over there, so very job, very, a job well done, and also recognize Ms. Morton for her accomplishment as a master.
Their school board, yes.
She put us over the top there.
Yeah, let me, let me, I know all of us on board the School Board of the Year for Tennessee appreciate the work that Bobby and I'm sure Bennett and other people did in the background to got the nomination ready. I'm sure they put a lot of hours into it, and we appreciate that.
Yes.
It's easy to speak the truth, so we appreciate it. You're welcome. You're welcome.
So next, we have operation.
I'll circulate this around, because this is going to kind of go with our presentation. These are the homeschool church-related and independent homeschool numbers that we have as up-to-date as we can get them right now. So I'll circulate that around. If you make one and kind of pass that down, let everybody have that, so you can look at that as we start. But what I wanted to do tonight is really introduce Dr. Bennett and Mr. Curtis, and of course, all of us had a little, you know, to do with this as well. But the things that we're going to talk about tonight are our VIP program. Of course, Dr. Bennett really heads that program up and supervises that, you know, for our district. And they've been kind of pushing me a little bit, you know, for the last year or so, I guess, to kind of expand that program into the homeschool arena. And, you know, I've been a little bit slower, you know, to go along, and I think it's been really a good conversation, because it's been really a good give and take. And, you know, I play the devil's advocate, and they, you know, to kind of answer the questions as to, you know, yeah, we can do this. And, you know, they've done a lot of research and kind of brought the program to where it is right now. And I think we've got some good options that we can really offer to students that are, you know, maybe not in our school system right now, but, you know, maybe could get them to come back into our school system. I think they've got a good plan that they've laid out as a pilot program. So the first couple of parts, Dr. Bennett will kind of take that lead, and then Carl may interject some with the financial part. And then I'll kind of end up with the VIP to work, which data that I've brought in that we might work with our business community. So again, we invite you to ask questions. We're trying to stop along the way, and, you know, if you've got any questions, we'll try to answer those as we go. And we've got some of our VIP folks and Warren Academy folks that use the VIP program here as well, so we're glad to have them in our audience tonight, too. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Bennett, and we'll just kind of go from there.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, so as many of you know, we have been operating an online program for our students who are most at risk from the high school. And so we have served approximately 100 to 125 per year for the last four years that I've been doing this. So we've had several kids, so any of you are welcome at any time, by the way, to come over by the VIP, which is on the campus of the middle school, and take us out. So what we're proposing to you now is a program that's going to address kids who are not in our system and who are being enrolled in homeschool setting. And so that's the first thing I want to talk to you tonight about, and then we'll move through the other programs as well. So, okay, so the first one, like I said, we're going to, we're going to hopefully call it the WC VIP at Home. And the next slide here is going to show you kind of the breakdown of the thought process behind this. So on your sheet there that Mr. Cox passed out, it discusses how those approximately 342 students right now who are not being served within the school setting, those are independent, as he said, church-related, whatnot. The kicker is, we don't get any money for those kids, because their parents have chosen for a multitude of reasons to not bring them into our system. And that could be anything from chronic absenteeism, religious beliefs, whatnot, you know, it's just a variety of issues. Many times, if the homeschool student comes back into the system, they are not as up-to-date or prepared academically as a student who spends time in the classroom. So what we're hoping to do is, I think you can click now. I don't know. Okay, we're not. Okay. Love technology. Okay. So what we're hoping to do is provide a program that we're going to initially start out targeting sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And we're going to try to offer a program initially free of charge during our pilot phase to get parents interested in what we can offer.
I think you're good. We're on, okay, we're good.
I think you're good.
Okay.
I think this is the portion where Mr. Curtis is going to come in and talk to you a little bit about some future costs and the benefit cost ratio. So I'm going to let you discuss on this slide.
We're now using Edge Annuity in the school system. They've been really good to work with. They've actually, we got ahead of the game, because they purchased Odyssey for their old vendor for our own school, in-school work that we did online. So with Dr. Bennett and myself, we've visited Anderson County going back a little while. Now, we've visited Putnam County several times, and Ms. Turner has been there, and several members from the VIP program and from Warren Academy have been on that visit. And so we've been in discussions on how we could, you know, reach out to a lot of those that have gone the homeschool route in the past. And so what we've looked at now is reaching out to some of our sixth through eighth grade students that are being homeschooled right now and offer them using Edge Annuity at home. So what we did is, we talked to Mr. Cox, and he gave us ability to start reaching out to our rep with Edge Annuity. And she met with Dr. Bennett and myself and said, yes, that you can have a pilot program with Edge Annuity for the remainder of the school year, actually, all the way until July 31st. We would have access to their curriculum, state-based curriculum, state standards being covered now for sixth through eighth grade students at no cost whatsoever to us. And so free is good.
Free, and we can do.
Very good.
So Mr. Cox said, all right, that's so we can start moving forward with that plan.
So what we would like to do is reach out to students right now that are in sixth through eighth grade and offer them access to Edge Annuity, that they could do those core academic classes at home, and they will work that all the way through the remainder of the school year. At that point, you know, it's going to be no cost to them if they would continue on with the program next school year, then we're looking at possibly around $100 a month to around $1,200 for the year. That's very competitive. We've seen numbers as high as $1,500 for homeschoolers having to pay, parents having to pay for homeschool for their students, as much as 1,200 to 1,500 easily. The cost to us right now would be around $600 just for the Edge Annuity piece. We would have to pay someone within the system to monitor that and support parents if there were any kind of technical issues. So that's really where we stand right now. We would like to move forward with sixth through eighth grade being able to use Edge Annuity through the homeschool route. A benefit in the future would be that if some of those then wanted to stay with the program as they moved into high school, we could then enroll them into that VIP program. Then we're recapturing the funds for that student that we're losing right now.
You know, and along the go-along with that, you know, a lot of times when we get homeschool students, you know, they're, like Dr. Bennett said, there's various ranges of homeschools. You know, there are church-related, there's independent. And a lot of times, what we have when parents come in and they say, hey, I want to homeschool my child, and we go through the paperwork with them, they really don't understand the process of that. You know, they fill out the paperwork, they homeless, now they're, they're set up to homeschool their child, and then they say, okay, now where do I get my books and my curriculum? And, you know, our answer to that is, you know, we'll be glad to help you and give you resources to find, but, you know, if you're homeschooling your child, you are the, you know, the school system for that child. So this kind of gives an opportunity for parents to have a resource that's local. You know, we wouldn't necessarily be monitoring the resource for credit in Warren County schools, but we could have staff members monitor it for technical assistance. And that's why we would want to cover our cost to make sure that, you know, it's no cost to us, and obviously cover the cost of those that we would have to pay to monitor it, you know, long-term. So it would be net zero, you know, for us, or maybe, you know, in a perfect world, we might make a little money, you know, off of that to continue to put in, build the program. But the homeschool portion, that's kind of in a nutshell, I guess, unless I missed anything else.
There's one more slide. You can click it. And that just goes back over what you basically said. So, that's fine. But, and I won't read that to you, because it's in your packet, and you guys are plenty capable of reading, so I'm not going to bore you with that. But it just reiterates what he just basically talked about. So that's, that is basically it on that one, so I think we're good.
So any questions over the homeschool portion? Probably move on to that.
Last slide had potential recapture of funding, and that would only be that we've, we've kept connection with them, and they still like us, and then they want to come back.
We're going to, we're going to show you the beauty of what we've been doing in the next, in the next slide. I think you're going to like it. It's going to make sense at home.
So what if, okay, you said sixth, seventh, and eighth that are being homeschooled now? What if for some reason, you know, somebody else decides, you know, I'm not homeschooling right now, but you know, hey, I like that program, I've heard about it, blah, 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 they want to enter it? What's the qualifications, or how can they or not? What?
Right. I think, well, you know, one of the things that we discussed about that was trying to keep the pilots swollen up into sixth, eighth, where it was manageable right now. Then, if we did have other grade levels that wanted to come in, you know, they only let the, I think, being correct, and Edge Annuity only allowed us about 10 seats, you know, at maximum, you know, for that free pilot, so it wouldn't be unlimited. After that, we would have to, you know, have a fee-based, you know, cover of cost. But that would be the goal, you know, obviously, start small and, you know, then move forward that way.
There would have been application process for them to get into it right now, even though this pilot process will. Students and parents coming into that program, they're going to utilize it to the fullest, so we can get good data back. They've also given us access, Edge Annuity did, to MyPath, which does give them an assessment when they begin the program, and then also an assessment at the end, so we can see the growth that the student has with us. Because honestly, most of those students that go to the homeschool route end up going back to us, and when they do, they are behind the grid.
Dr. Bennett, Mr. Curtis, I, you know, I'm trying to imagine this when I read the proposal originally, and of course, we've talked about virtual instruction. I guess my vision could range from this being kind of an accessory to homeschooling in the traditional sense, or it could be the complete package. So where along that spectrum, I mean, as a complete package, I would think that Edge Annuity would assign the tests. I'm assuming these are going to be graded electronically, and you run into an issue with writing assessments, though. But anyway, how, just how complete is this package for the parents considering homeschooling?
Right. So it's the same thing that we're using now as far as the curriculum is concerned, and it is, it's all state-aligned, so there's nothing there that's not in alignment with what we're doing already with our curriculum. Like you said, it does grade, like multiple choice items and such. The writing that you're speaking of, that does have to be looked at by a teacher, so there would be.
Is that teacher with Edge Annuity, or in our?
We have a couple of options with that, and.
I mean, there could be, you know, again, that's, that's the, if they are totally homeschool and purchasing this product or using this product to homeschool, if I'm homeschooling my child, then I'm going to be the one responsible for that curriculum. All we're doing is providing them a conduit to curriculum for a homeschooled student. You know, if we move in, when we get into the flex part, then that might entail some of our folks being involved in that. You know, and we discussed down the road, you know, we might be able to have a teacher, one of our teachers, that we would pay, you know, to monitor that curriculum for a parent, but there again, that would be on a fee basis as well, because we'd have to cover our costs. So it's really kind of three programs. If you're homeschooling your child, and you have no access to curriculum books, et cetera, here's a, here's an option for you. But you're, you're choosing to do that, you use that how you need to use it. And then the other parts, the flex, and the other parts will probably get there.
It'll make more sense, is what we're going to do. Okay, so now talking about flex. So the flex is going to catch your kids ninth through 12th grade, and you can go ahead and click it. So I'll now go and talk about homeschool.
It's a little slow. There it is. Like me, there we go.
Okay, so this program, we're going to say there's going to be a hybrid online blended program, where the student would initially come onto our campus for a full day, and then as we saw that they could actually have good grades, good attendance, good work habits, we can wing them off to where that student may be working entirely online at home. This can meet needs of students who have really bad anxiety issues, maybe a sick parent at home. We run into that quite a lot. Could also maybe touch on kids that are working part-time, so that may need to leave a little bit early and go to that part-time job. The students will still have access to us at any point in time. If they needed to come in, they're welcome to do that in addition to working from home. We're going to be there so they can come in during the day. What the neat thing about this is, if you start with us in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade for your homeschool program, you really like it and you want to stay with it, we can flip you to our flex program. Since we already own the content and the curriculum for that, that's a free at that point. So if you want to touch on how that's going to impact you financially, then.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. So if we flip them into the flex program, then they're back enrolled in the school system. So then BEP dollars start flowing, you know, back to us, because they're enrolled in the school system. So right now, kind of on a pilot for flex, I guess, you'd say, we've started offering that if a student is on homebound for a medical issue, then we, they're still enrolled in our school system, but we could use them as a flex model so that they could keep up at home. You know, it saves us from having to send a teacher out there, but the teacher's monitoring that work for the student. So it's electronic. And, you know, the beauty of us being one-to-one in grade seven through 12 is all students have a Chromebook, so they can access that, you know, from anywhere. They can access it from home, they can access it from McDonald's, or the library, or wherever they're at that has, you know, electronic access. So then, at that point, we would be starting to recapture some of those BEP dollars that maybe a student's not right now, so. Any questions concerning that?
So I guess, under the flex program, these students that enroll and the parents who accept this program, are they enrolled as Warren County students?
Under, under this program, they would be. If they're just totally independent homeschool, it's kind of the best of all worlds at once. You know, you've got students that, if the parent says, I'm, I want to do it myself, here, we'll provide you the conduit to do it for a certain fee, and you can do it yourself. If you want to, us to monitor it, now we've got a flex program where you can come back into the school system. We can monitor it if you have, you know, certain issues, medical issues, you know, things that prohibit you from being in the classroom, you know, homebound, et cetera. So, yeah.
So if they come back in this VIP flex program, then it would be an advantage for them, because they wouldn't, if I, we just write, they wouldn't be out any money.
No.
They would be coming in to, and we would be giving them for free, because they're just a regular student.
They're enrolled, it's just off campus.
Right. You know, we have students from various issues, you know, from pregnancy, to students have cancer, to students who have medical issues, you know, that could take advantage of that. You know, so there's, there's definitely an opportunity on a smaller scale. You know, obviously, if it's a student that says, hey, I just don't want to be at the high school, I want to go, you know, to a virtual program, and we have the virtual program there, there's an application process for that, they have to qualify for that. So what we're doing with the homeschool and the flex is just offering safety nets for kids, you know, to ensure that they, that we meet their needs if they can't be in there.
Hello. Mr. George, what do you think?
I think it'd be fantastic, because we do have, this year, we've had a lot of students that their mother or father has been sick, you know, and they may be the only transportation of ours. If mom's sick, dad may be having to work to keep the bills going. So that meant the student may be the only one that can drive the parent to their treatments. So for this program, they could sit there with mom while the treatment was going on, and as long as they had internet access, they could be going to school while they were sitting there. I think it's a great opportunity for kids that might think that they have to drop out because of situations, and it would, it would give them the opportunity to be successful and to move on.
And this is ninth through 12. Now, will this always be ninth through 12, the flex program?
You know, I think we could expand it at some point, you know, but again, that's, that's where I think that I've been a little bit hesitant, and they've been a little bit more aggressive, is that, you know, the, I'm a little bit hesitant to move that fast and not, and jump in the pool not knowing what's in the pool. And, you know, so we're doing our new diligence on that.
The opportunity's there.
But the opportunity's there. You know, if it goes well, then yeah, I think we could. But, you know, I know, there, again, there's, there's times when this would come into play, and, you know, residency would be, of course, we're not looking for students to say, okay, hey, I just want to go and do it online, I can stay at home and work. Well, no, there's, there's a qualifying process for that. You know, this is for special circumstances, where students have special, you know, special needs. But right now, you know, we're using it, you know, for homebound on just with ninth through 12 students and trying to see how it works, but then we can build the program from there.
I'm sorry to ask so many questions, but there's a lot of novelty in this thing, as far as I'm concerned. Edge Annuity, going back to their services, and they're monitoring these students, and they, they send you an email or however they communicate with you and say, well, your student, Bill Zuckman, has missed four of the last five assigned tests, and on the one he took, he scored below 50 points on it. I mean, to help with managing that particular student, what do we do?
Right. So our students that we have currently enrolled, that's not how that works. That's just going to be for the homeschool portion, that like he's talking about, where you're just going to be buying curriculum content from us. It's just, we're giving it to you on a silver platter, Edge Annuity's going to handle all that. We're not going to do anything curriculum-wise with those kids. That's going to be provided straight through the vendor. Our kids that are on campus right now, and also at Warren Academy, we have teachers, teachers of records, teachers of record and facilitators who monitor everything every day, all day. And they grade everything and facilitate monitor for our kids who are already enrolled at 100% of the time. But the homeschool is a little bit different. It's just like, you know, if you go to Pizza Hut, you buy pizza, that's your pizza, take it home and eat it, okay? Pizza Hut's not going to come help you, cut it and eat it. That's what we're doing. We're just going to sell it to them, and then it's on them and within Edge Annuity to follow through. So, and I think they will really be able to do that, because Edge Annuity is such a top-line program, that it's, it has everything in it that a kid would need to go through a class. I mean, there's videos, it's content-rich, it's, they can replay the videos to watch how to solve a math problem multiple times, unlimited times. So it's, it's very, it's very exciting what, what we're. So it's very exciting what we can do with it, so.
So we're just the vendor.
Right.
Right.
For the homeschool portion.
But they're, but they're actually getting, if they were staying in homeschool, they wouldn't be getting a degree. They'd be getting the degree in this.
They would graduate at some point, you know, either way, you know. But what this would be, at least they would have state-approved online curriculums.
State-approved curriculum.
Right.
Where some of...
Right, may not.
Some of them may not.
Right.
That they're involved in, because there's a lot of, there's a lot of homeschool academic material or subjects that they take that's not accredited through the state.
Right. And then, you know, it runs the spectrum, you know, there are homeschools in Warren County that are top-notch and kids go to Ivy League schools, you know, from there. And then it's all the way down. So, you know, for those parents who may not have the access, then this is an opportunity to get access.
Is it a pretty easy process for a child to leave the flex program and come back into the school system so their circumstances change? Is that a pretty easy process?
I think that would make it a lot easier when they come in because they would be more up-to-date with the curriculum. Whereas if they come from generic homeschool that's out there, they may not have the background that they need to be successful once they re-enter.
That's an excellent point, yeah.
It's because, and it's because the Edgenuity program is aligned with their curriculum.
Yes, yes.
So they wouldn't be behind.
Right, the state curriculum and we've also aligned it back to the high school curriculum because all of my staff, including Brian from Warren Academy, have worked with teachers to match your pacing guides and everything that you guys are doing from your math, social studies department, English department, all of that. So we're covered, we're really thorough with that. So when his kids come over to my program, they pick up where they left with him. So it's really, really well done.
Yeah, I just want to mention, they leave us and a lot of us go into a setting where they're in accredited homeschool that's out there where they're, and will accept those credits even at the high school level with them coming back in. But what's happening is when they end up as an independent homeschool, the parent becomes the school, the teacher and the sole provider of education to them. They may or may not have access to high-quality materials. So by them going into the pilot, they're going to have access to state-aligned rigorous curriculum that they can do in the core subjects, sixth to eighth grade. And the parent has access to that and can monitor that and everything. The advantage would be that if they wanted to stay in the program and come into it at the high school level, now you're going to have Warren County High School teachers that are going to be the teachers of record for them and they're going to be earning those credits. Right now, they're just taking curriculum and using it to hopefully, if they do come back into the system, they're on grade level. But right now, many of those that are independent homeschool are coming back to us and they're not on grade level.
And when they enter back in with us and it's an independent, not accredited, we have to give them an exam to see if we accept that credit. Many times they don't pass any of those exams and they come in with no credits. And so they're starting back at like a freshman week when they enter, no matter what their age and level is.
Okay, so the last part is the VIP to work program that we've looked at or really I've talked to them about. And where this kind of came about was, I went to Jackson a couple of weeks ago, was asked to come down there to go to Jackson-Madison School District and share what we do here as far as vocational programs go, but also to share about our Citizens for Progress Scholarship Program. And then to learn about their school to work programs they've developed. So as I was driving back, you know, I was thinking about, man, we can really take advantage of doing the same thing because we've got the same opportunities right here, plus with our business community. So I called, when I got back, I talked with Courtney and Carl about that and I called Mr. Herzog, who, you know, is obviously the conduit between the business community, and, you know, discussed that with him and he, the words he had was, you know, "It's interesting you brought that up because we're getting ready to schedule a meeting on the 13th to bring business and industry in and they're interested in internships and work-based learning." So it kind of all the moons aligned right there, you know, together. So what the school to work would be, it's getting a little slow again, but it's, you know, students that are enrolled in our high school could earn credit using Edgenuity. To give you the example, I toured the Black and Decker Plant in Jackson and on that plant, they have a classroom set up and they even staff a teacher in that classroom. And they had, started last year, they had about six students that came in and they went to school four hours a day using the online program and then they actually worked in the plant four hours a day. So they made nine, they set the wage at 9:50 an hour. So those students were making 9:50 an hour, working four hours a day and then they were working themselves into a job after high school when they graduate. So it's gone so well there that they've now gathered six businesses that are involved in that program and they're taking students from high schools and busing them to work and back to a central location each day. So in the Black and Decker Plant, they went from six students to January, they're going to have 18 students that are in the program. And, you know, these are students that are getting real work experience. It meets the need of business and industry because they're looking for workforce and it's training those students. Those students know on the front end that, you know, they're not interested in going to, you know, Motlow or TCAD or post-secondary ed, but they, they're interested in working, then that's kind of where school to work or VIP to work can come in. So they would work four hours a day, they would, you know, work on their schoolwork four hours a day, you know, complete their regular high school diploma. They'd still be enrolled in our school system, so we're getting 100% of the BEP funds by them doing that. And then we're helping our workforce out the same way. You know, we have Ben Longman take some of our students now. We've had Baseball Casket that have taken some of our students. We have had, Jordan has had some of our students. So, you know, the biggest issue with this program is the business folks getting over the 18-year-old liability issues. So that's something that we're working with and on the 13th, that's what we're going to talk about, is, you know, it's being done now in other plants, here's how they're doing it. But, you know, we could actually, if the businesses are willing to take our students, we can develop this program in a similar fashion where, you know, they can, you know, work four hours a day, go to school four hours a day. And, you know, when they come out, you know, we've prepared a workforce and prepared the students for a job that they could, that they're ready for when they get out. So that's kind of VIP to work in a nutshell.
Is this generally seniors?
Juniors and seniors, normally seven to 18-year-olds, except for the sixth through eighth graders that we'll be piloting.
So are they on target for all of their credits? I mean, how does that?
Yeah, yeah, they're on target for graduation.
Even with the four hours per day?
Right. And when we did adult high school before we transformed it into VIP, it was four hours a day minimum is what they had to do. And it was an unstructured program. So yeah, you know, and that's, that's one of the things with the work program is the students had to go through an interview process for that business, they were onboarded. You know, if they were late to work, then they built points up. If they pointed out, then they were out of the program, you know, just like they were out of a job, you know? So it's teaching them that responsibility, you know, as well. And, you know, I know there, I saw two of the students when we toured the plant that were, were working on that. So, so again, it's a expansion of a program that Dr. Bennett has already built, you know, for our VIP program. You know, it's working in other communities. So really kind of what we're asking, I guess, for you all is just your approval to, you know, stick our toe in the water and, you know, see if we've got interest from homeschool folks that might want to come back in, the flexibility option. And then I'm going to present it on the 13th to the business folks and see how they feel about it and then we kind of go from there. You know, the good thing is it's not going to cost us any money. You know, it's, you know, we've got the pilots set up, they have the pilots set up, monitoring system's in place. And, you know, if we start to expand, then, you know, we'll have to come back and, you know, see, make sure we cover our costs with that, so.
Sounds good, I'll make a motion that we go forward with it.
Does that motion need to include, are we going to do another contract or a contract extension with Edgenuity?
No, I think we got that working.
Oh, that's all, thank you.
I think teaching the students to be on time. I know when I worked, that was the biggest deal we have, is the students coming to work, not being on time and thinking they can leave anytime. Just, just giving them that encouragement will help tremendously, tremendously.
So we have a motion on the floor to extend. Second all over, any discussion? Those in favor?
You know, Madam Chairperson, I think we all join in complimenting and commending Dr. Bennett and Mr. Curtis and Bob and everybody had a hand in this because I see it as a way of making this opportunity available when otherwise this education continuation would not be possible. And I know it's one of the, one of your prospective student segments would be young mothers with children or parents having a sick parent that requires extensive care, transportation issues. We're all about making opportunities available, so compliments to you all for your leadership on this.
And thank you all.
Absolutely.
There's the brains behind that, that's it, all I did was try to stay out of the way. So they did, they've done a great job of researching, they've done a great job of moving that forward. And, you know, really that's, I was kind of trying to be the devil's advocate and make sure that, you know, we were going to be solving. So it took a little while, but it got us where we need to be. So they do a great job and I appreciate them doing that. So the next item on our operations, I just wanted to go real quickly through the report card. The report card came up, I think on the 25th of November. This is really the data that you've already seen and Lacy's done a great job reporting on and it's just in a different view. So I'll just go over the district portion real quick just to, you know, let you see that, that portion of it. But if you go to the report card site, best way to get there is just Tennessee Department of Education and go to their website, go to top links and go down to the report card and you can get there. And then we all know what Warren County looks like, so we just click on Warren County and it'll bring up the district and you can also go to the schools as well. But we'll look at the district portion just tonight and, you know, you can look at the schools at your leisure. But it will come up with, you know, the achievement measures, growth, chronically absent, ELL graduation rate and ready graduate. So the best way is to go probably here and it'll pull up just our site and you can kind of see where we're at. So this is our 2018 results. As we know, achievement, we did well in achievement, improved. Even those errors are going up in this chart, that's a good thing. So we improved in our success rate overall, math, English and social studies improved mostly. Social studies and math were our biggest areas, 4% improvement there in academic achievement. So, you know, our frustration was, how do you improve in every area but your growth doesn't follow that? Well, you know, I still can't explain that. But, you know, when you're looking at growth, when we go there, we're comparing ourself to every other district in the state. So other students grew faster than our students grew. Not meaning that we didn't do what we were supposed to, but that's where the growth portions are. See, in social studies, like we said, we were a five and then we were a level one in the overall and in English and math. So it's not meaning that we didn't perform, it just means that we didn't perform at the same rate as peers across the state. So that's something that we continue to work on. When we go to chronically absent, now these are students who are missing 10% or more of the school year. So last year we had 12% that missed 16 days or more of the school year. They're considered chronically absent. So we decreased that number 2.1% from the previous year. So we had more students in school, we had less out-of-school suspensions and less in-school suspensions than last year. So, and then we had zero expulsions. So, you know, we had more students in, so that's a, when the errors are going down in that chart, that's a good thing in that chart because we have more students in school.
I have a question, what college do you think, I mean, it's good we had less out-of-school suspension, but what contributed to that, you think?
Well, we did a lot of work and we still have a lot of conversations on that. We track our students and track our suspensions and try to find different ways to discipline students right now by suspending them out of school. So if they're suspended out of school, then obviously they're not getting any kind of instruction at all. So we still had, you know, suspensions, high school, I think, had the most suspensions. Of course, they've got the biggest population of students. Of course, middle school was next, but they did a good job of really looking at other alternatives. And then elementary schools were the last part.
So what does that mean, the other alternatives are working? You know, sometimes, you know, crime's got to fit the...
Yeah, well, now this year, again, we just went through our suspensions this year. We've got more suspensions this year than we had last year. So it's just, it's kind of the punishment fits the crime. We've got more students in our alternative school right now than we had this time last year. And it's because of the offense, you know, we've had, you know, students who've gotten in fights, we've had students that brought drugs to school, we've had students that threaten other students, you know, and didn't have that last year. So, but we're tracking, you know, all of those things, but, you know, the alternative school this year is getting a little, little crowded, isn't it? So, you know, hopefully we'll take some of those back in. But, yeah, it's really trying to find other ways to, you know, you know, make sure students are in school and still discipline them the way they are. So, so that was, you know, a good thing. Hopefully we'll continue that. Our ELL progress, last year we had 45.3% were, our ELL students were proficient, improved that by 1.6% of the long-term students that we have. So our goal is to exit those students after a year or two years, depending on where they're at. So, you know, we're doing well at making sure that about half of those students are exited, you know, on time and then we still have our long-term students that we're continuing to serve. So hopefully, you know, our goal is to get those students out of ELL services as quickly as we can. Our ready graduate indicator, we see we improved our ready graduate by 5.1%, 37%. So those are students who are either making a 21 or above on the ACT or getting four early post-secondary options by the time, you know, they graduate. So we've improved that over last year, which is good. Met our AMO, did we met our double, do we met our double AMO or just an AMO, you remember?
I think it's just AMO.
AMO. Of course, our average composite score, we dropped about 1/10 of a percent in ACT from last year. We're still about two points off the state average of 20 and so we still struggle, you know, with trying to get ACT up to that 21. But that's kind of where we're at on ACT. And then the last area, graduation rate. See, our graduation rate is 95.9%, so it increased at 1.7. So we're well above the state average in graduation rate. This next year, that lags behind a year. So we're going to, we'll see a drop in graduation rate for next accountability here. We already know that because we had several students that got a special education diploma, so that'll probably drop that down to about 90%. The graduation rate only shows students that get a regular education diploma. So, you know, if we have students that don't complete and have a special education diploma, then they don't get counted as the graduation rate, although they've met their IEP. Dropout rate, we dropped, dropped out rate decreased, which is good. So it was about 2.3%. And then it shows our post-secondary enrollment is about 52.8%. Now, the data that I look at on that is the THEC data, Tennessee Higher Education Commission, which shows that it's at 61% and that we've improved over the last three years. So I appealed that with the department and what they said was their calculations and THEC's calculations were different. So I said, "Well, we've only got one set of students that are going into higher end." So I don't know what your calculations are compared to theirs, but I'm going to say it's somewhere between 52 and 61. Let's just be safe on that. So, but our, in January, we'll have our THEC report card come out, so we'll kind of see how those measure. But, you know, I think we are having more students go in there in the post-secondary because we're having more students take the enrollment, so. But that's in a nutshell, like I said, the report card. You can go and look at your school and your area. Like I said, some schools did better than, than others, but as a district, feel good about... about it. And like I said, that's the, that's kind of the visual portion of what we gave you back a few months ago.
You know, I think one of the things that our, our community supports our schools tremendously, but I think one thing we all need to pay attention to is in these growth measures, that's, that's what's called dynamic scoring. We're not norm to fixed, to fix markers. We're comparing all the other districts. And we can't control what they don't do or don't do. Now, there's a virtue in that is that it makes people actually work harder. You don't get to the point where you say, "Well, I'm one-tenth of a percentage point over my assigned benchmark, so, you know, everything's good, we don't have to do anything else." I think it keeps, keeps the districts and keeps, keeps teachers and education leaders always striving for a higher level of achievement. And in that sense, that's probably a positive thing. But here again, there's variables that we do not control.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, what we try to do is we try to look at our students and, you know, move our students from approaching and below proficient to track and mastery. So if we can, you know, if, if we move those students, we feel like we've accomplished our goal because we're trying to move our students. You know, I, I can't control what other districts do. You know, I try to find out what other districts do so they can help us. And Autumn and Carl and all of us do the same thing. But, you know, we, we can control our students or try to do the best that we can to control our students and move them, but...
I, we were, had a little discussion at the TFBA convention about the involvement of our special education students in reference to our grading system for the schools. Now, a lot of schools across the state have said the same thing we've been saying for years. We need to be judged on everybody's ability instead of just packing it all one together.
Right, absolutely.
And that's, well, everybody's facing the same thing that we, that we face when it comes to being graded.
Right.
And nobody likes that one same degree.
No, the accountability system has been a point of discussion for a few weeks now. So it's, it's stayed the same. The state board didn't take any action on that, so we'll have the same accountability system for next year and then we'll, but we'll see where we go and maybe that'll change.
Well, no, I don't think any reasonable person's going to jack to very high level of accountability and transparency.
Oh, yeah, yep.
With that said, and we've said many times before, the state and those who are pulling the levers and turning the dials on the state level need to be aware that this should not become something punitive to discredit public education.
Absolutely.
Including Warren County. And it could get very, very close to doing that. That's why we oppose those letter grade assignments. I, I just, I just think that that is, has a great potential for a lot of iniquity, shall we say.
Absolutely.
You know, I despise it because if you just give us a single, every school system a single grade, that doesn't, that's saying that if you get that C, not every, not every aspect of our school system is C.
Exactly.
And a lot of people don't understand that, they just look at that, what you, what they give you, and that's why everybody across the state was, said, even said at the convention, there, everybody's against it, but you can't beat the higher ups.
The perverse thing about it is if you're trying to give one letter grade, now that's easily comprehensible, you can boil that down to a, to a bumper sticker. You know, Warren County is, hey, we like that. But the fact is, you are aggregating literally millions of data points and, and all the nuance and subtlety and the different things we do, we talked about, we've had student advice that you're talking about, the great things we're doing in a, in a lot of ways. And all that's very true, but you don't get credit for that in this system.
No, there's a lot of grade on that report card for robotics and mechatronics and business involvement and culinary arts and all of those things.
Yep.
So, you know, so, yeah, I agree a hundred percent with Mr. Bennett and Mr. Zekman. There's, it's hard to, you know, boil things down to one thing. That's, that's it, Madam Chairman, for me.
At a wrap?
That's a wrap.
All right. I think next on our agenda is curriculum and achievement, Mr. Zekman.
Yes, indeed. And I had, had it printed out, we have, we have two, yeah, there it is, thank you. Two items on first reading, first of policy, IHC class of 2019 and 2020 class rankings. And I don't see that much difference in what we have done in the past, but Robin, do you and Bobby want to say anything about that?
Really, there's two, two words, joint and select as far as the industry certifications go and joint or dual enrollment in, in policy IHC. And then in the latter part, it talks about the same thing, joint or select in the footnote for those policies. And Carl and Mr. George and Robin and probably several others at the high school were collaborate, collaboratively worked on that to, you know, bring, you know, that to the board. So I, I would recommend that based upon their recommendation.
Okay. Well, that being the case, I would note that there, if any students or student parents feel like their accomplishments are not properly recognized in this system, there is an appeals process.
Yes.
That's true.
And so that's, their, their rights and privileges are protected in this. That said, I'm going to move, Madam Chairperson, for adoption on first reading of IHC class of 2019 and 2020 class ranking.
Okay, we have a motion on policy IHC. Ask for a second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Those in favor? All right.
Okay, next item is policy IHCA, and that's the class ranking and graduation recognitions beginning in the class of 2021.
Okay.
That's the same, same wording.
Yeah. Okay, so basically same wording, different description.
Different, different from policy, yes.
Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to move for adoption on first reading of policy IHCA.
Okay, motion on that? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Um, next would be facilities and resource management.
All right, we discussed in the meeting before about the finishing of the door for the fire marshal. Did I hear a motion to accept that bid and go ahead and do that?
I'd still like to talk for the motion.
How much did, was the door, ten thousand?
Eight, ninety-seven, eighty-three.
Ten thousand, eight.
Ninety-seven, eighty-three.
And that's going to come out of contingency?
Yes, it'll come out of contingency and then we'll have to determine, you know, where, if we pulled the rest of it out of capital or, you know, where we go from there.
And that, that motion came out of committee, so, so we'll need a motion.
So moved.
Teddy, and a second on that?
A second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Next, do we have another item?
Yes, the, there's a motion for the mechanical and the roofing to be accepted.
Okay.
Discussion on that?
So who, is it OLG?
OLG, yes, OLG.
Is who we're going to...
For the mechanical.
And the roofing.
And roofing is Rinks Roofing.
Okay, Rinks Roofing.
Richard Rinks.
Okay, so...
So he'd be done separately from what we're doing with the civil.
Yeah. Roofing and mechanical can be one.
Yes, it can be one.
Okay, so we need a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Bennett?
Second.
Teddy? Second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. All right, Ms. Sue?
The civil.
The next thing was to let Bobby and David do the checking for the civil.
So they're going to have a meeting and discuss the four bidders and come back with a proposal, recommendation to the board.
I think that was, that was my motion in the facilities committee.
Yeah.
Is for Bobby and his staff to evaluate the four...
Yes.
Competitors for, for the civil engineering and then make a recommendation at the January meeting.
Yes, yes. So we just need a motion from the floor?
Okay, so moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, do we have anything else from committee, Ms. Sue?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
I just had one other thing not to forget, that Bobby's going to ask the other districts about their ag buildings.
Oh, yes.
And we can maybe find somebody to, yeah, to build that.
To get that done, I agree. We need to, I would, I would love to get that completed.
This is, this has got to be an issue, and I think we started with this in conjunction with the Future Farmers Alumni Association, that we were, I mean, everybody went into it with good faith with the expectation that in a timely and cost-efficient manner, we would be able to provide a nice agriculture barn, we call it the living laboratory or something like that. And we had visions of a very nice, modern, serviceable, durable facility. And the, we've been through three rounds of bidding. And the last one came in, we got one bid, and I call it the time for last, we got one bid. Is that...
I got, got zero bids the time for that, two bids the time for that.
Okay. So this, this has had, shall we say, a troubled history. And now we're down to a situation where we're looking at this last bid from the vendor in Gallatin, just rough, rough calculation, about a hundred and forty thousand dollars for a twenty-four hundred square foot building. We're paying fifty-nine dollars a square foot for a building, that, that includes the concrete floor. But a building with a roof and no walls, no utilities, no inside partitions, those are things that we want to do on our own. And as the old saying goes, we're over the barrel on this thing. And I think everybody on this board and the administration wants to make this facility available as quickly as possible for the benefit of our students and also to keep faith with the FFA alumni, you know, who raised twenty-five thousand dollars. There's just some kind of issue trying to build a forty by sixty pole barn, and I just, I, I don't, I don't know, I don't know what has to be complicated. I mean, we talked about the fact that it is on school property, that it will be housing students, it will be classified as, as a classroom building, and you have safety concerns. And then the fire marshal tells us, we've got to put up emergency fire exit signs for a building that has no walls. If you're inside a building that has no walls, are you going to have trouble finding your way out? So I mean, this is, this was one of the, one of the unexpected things that's happened with this building. But I'm, I know that everybody on this board and the administration want to see this happen. I mean, it's going to be responsible. But, but I think the way we left that, Madam Chairperson, is that Bobby and his staff are going to kind of canvas other school systems in the area and see how they manage to build a nice ag barns for their vocational agricultural program.
Well, my ultimate hope is that we built a state-of-the-art facility for our athletes. And I truly believe our agricultural students deserve a state-of-the-art facility at some point.
Nobody would disagree.
Oh, yeah, nobody disagree. Yeah, I, I agree with that a hundred percent. I would love to have a barn and not be discussing a barn.
All right, any other topic? Okay, I think we might need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Those in favor? Okay, we're adjourned.